Thanks for waiting. We are going to get started here, first with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Information only. Item A.
I'm really excited again to have our Copan friends here today. I'm going to invite Dr. Urick up to introduce our speakers.
Good evening. This is your...
Pressure button.
Oh, that might help.
There it is.
Thank you for having us here this evening. This is your annual Copan bucket filler. It's truly what it says for our district. It's a win-win for everyone involved. We are celebrating a partnership of nearly 30 years with a private school in Copan. It's a K-12 school and they teach English to all of their students. And so we get to be host to our friends from Copan every year and they come and they just get to live the life of an Ankeny teenager while they're here. Just typical, just hanging out with the family, going to activities, just like our students do. And we're always excited too because they bring some of their staff. So it is my privilege to introduce their new principal, Ms. Resi.
Hi, good evening. I am so glad to be here and to be here with my students and my team. I want to introduce you, Sara. She is the English director and Harumi. They have been traveling for many years and bringing these beautiful kids to our school. So maybe Sara, you can help me introducing the kids of Copan.
Our kids.
Well, no.
Well, Julia Gutierrez, it's her first time here. She will give some words. And Paulina Banegas, this is her second year visiting here Ankeny. So Pa, can you come here to the front?
Hi.
Hello.
Some people arrive and make such a great impact in your life, you can barely remember what life was like before them. Good afternoon, Ankeny family and members of the school board. These words reflect what I have been hearing from those students who have either hosted or traveled to Ankeny. And they are so true because once you're part of this program, life has changed forever. My name is Julia and this is my first time in the program. I know it has been held for 31 years so far. There have been different events during this time which have led to some breaches. I can recall the 9/11 or COVID, to mention a pair of them. The strong bonds being built with the different people who have been involved in one way or the other have been a net of connection which made our exchange possible until these days. It is true that working hand in hand as a great team has made things possible. We have no doubt that this program is full of benefits for both parts and that further generations should experience what hundreds of students have had the chance until now. When I was in elementary school, I dreamed of getting to high school and having the opportunity to travel here. Now I can't believe I'm here and my dream came true. I'm part of this incredible experience and for sure, I'll return to Mexico holding a new version of myself. I will go back and I'll talk about a new mother, a new sister, and a complete new family while my friends will not understand how in just two weeks, I've learned to love so many people that I now call them my family. And that is the magic of this experience. We would like to have this exchange for many more years so that many more students can live what we did. We're absolutely sure that this program has left and will leave a footprint in all students surpassing any expectation. In behalf of all Copan students, teachers, and principals, we would like to thank Ankeny for hosting us and for making us part of your community. Thank you to all the families who have received students and who have adopted us as their daughters or sons. We are also grateful for all the teachers who directly or indirectly have been part of the program, leading plans and activities for us to reach the goals of this exchange. Thanks to all principals of high school who have been willing to receive us. And thanks to the school board for the support given to the teachers and principals to maintain this program. We will hold these two weeks forever in our hearts. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paulina. As my teacher said, I'm here representing our school, Copan. So first and foremost, I would like to thank all of the members of the school board as well as Ms. Harumi and Ms. Sara for granting me with this opportunity to stand here before you, share my experience in this exchange program, and give you my opinion on why I think this amazing experience should continue. Last year was my first year as an exchange student and honestly, it surpassed every expectation I had about the program. My family and host friends made sure that I was always all right and our relationship has only gotten stronger. This time, my family is no exception. They've all been treating me so nice. Who would have said that this time, my family would also be my best experience? This year, I'm here with Sophie Shadwick. She's a junior and practices dance. All of her friends have received me with a lot of excitement and affection. I had the opportunity to go to one of her dance practice and all of her friends were making me laugh so much, just like they do at school. All of the first week was incredible, full of activities such as basketball games, roller skating, bowling, dinners with friends, basketball games... Oh, sorry. I'm too nervous. Roller skating, bowling, dinner with friends and family. I also had the opportunity to go to my brother's middle school basketball game. His name is Drake. And I felt like an actual older sister, all happy and proud watching her brother play in basketball. I know all of the students, including me, are happy to be here having this opportunity that has been going through 31 years. And we are all fortunate that our schools are giving us this unique experience. I also know that this program has helped the students from Copan that are here with improving their English, being more independent, to relate better, making new friends, and above all, to learn from all of you who have given us and taught us how much fun and interesting an exchange can be. So the second week barely begins and I can already feel that melancholic feeling. Right now, I can only imagine how difficult it will be for all of us to have to say goodbye and go back to normal after all that we've experienced. I'll miss my family very much. They welcome me with open arms and always took care of me. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you so much for these unforgettable experiences that you gave me. I will miss everyone and all of the classes too, but overall, I'll miss Sophie. My incredible sister who was always there for me, making me laugh and loving me as I don't have the words to thank her and everyone around her for making me feel loved and welcomed. Living with this bond makes me think of how much I want other students to have it, to have a new family that will treat you just as your family back at home. I hope that my bond with my family only grows bigger and that we get the chance to see each other again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we also brought you some gifts.
Did they give them?
Yeah. My classmate, I think, will give them to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, students, and thank you for these words, Sanapawa and Julia. They were really moving. Ms. Resi, our principal, will share some words with you.
My name is Resia, but everybody calls me Resi. I am very proud to be the new head principal at Copan. I have been working there for only one year with an incredible team of 350 people. We are celebrating our 50-year anniversary and we have an ambitious academic project that I feel very proud of. I came here to learn about Ankeny-Copan project and to make it my own because I know that it has been going and growing for the last 31 years. This multicultural experience has become one of the top priorities for our institution because of the amazing skills it provides our students. It opens the world for them and makes them believe they can achieve any future goal in life. I have been here only for a few hours and I am already in love with Ankeny, your schools, and the people. I believe in the importance of this project and I am fully committed to help it go forward for the next at least 30 years. I know this year, we had our challenges and that sadly, for the first time in 30 years, we won't have the pleasure of receiving you students in Mexico. I want you to know that you can count on me and all of our team to overcome these challenges. You can trust me and our institution. Under my watch, you students will always be safe and happy when they go to Mexico. Thank you again for your trust, your hospitality, and your love.
Thank you so much.
We have a special guest today, Valerie Gonzalez. She, when she was a student, a high school student, she had the opportunity to travel to Mexico. So 27 years ago, and she's still being moved by this project. So welcome, Valerie.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Gonzalez. I'm a graduate of Ankeny High School and a former student participant in the Ankeny-Copan Sister School Exchange. I'm also the parent of a Centennial High School student and we are hosting Harumi this year, one of our exchange coordinators from Copan. I'm also a Spanish and ELL professor at DMAC and I have worked as a language educator in central Iowa for 20 years. When I was 15 years old, my Spanish teacher offered us an opportunity to host Mexican students from our sister school in Mexico City and to travel over spring break to experience a Mexican high school. Ankeny has changed a lot in the past 27 years, but this exchange continues to be an opportunity of a lifetime for many of our students to leave Iowa and experience the world beyond. The Ankeny-Copan experience changed the trajectory of my life. While in Mexico, I lived with a Mexican family similar to my own, while experiencing life in a large, modern city filled with new sights, sounds, flavors, and history that I couldn't experience here in Iowa. I was able to use Spanish from the classroom to interact authentically with my new Mexican friends and family. It was such a significant experience that I went again the next year and I studied in Mexico City as an undergraduate student. I still visit friends from the Copan exchange when I travel to Mexico City every few years. Since then, I have coordinated exchanges, hosted international visitors, and traveled all over the world. I believe that the Ankeny-Copan exchange was the catalyst for this. I know that many former Ankeny and Copan students have similar stories. I feel that our sister school exchange programs are essential for our community so that our students learn to embrace rather than fear the world beyond Iowa and the United States. We greatly appreciate and value your continued support of such meaningful and transformative educational exchange programs here in Ankeny. It requires a community effort and it's wonderful to see our teachers, staff, families, and students unite again this year to provide such an experience for our students. Thank you. We will have a few Centennial, or a few Ankeny students speak now.
Thank you.
I have been a part of the exchange program for the past two years and I've been able to host two different exchange students. My sister was also a part of the program in the past and was able to travel to Mexico twice and host a student, so that's what encouraged me to be a part of the program. I've loved being able to host the students and show them our culture and like see what it's like to be a high school student here while also learning about their culture. My favorite part of the exchange though, has probably been meeting so many new people that I wouldn't have been able to meet otherwise and making lifelong friends and memories out of it. So I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to be able to be part of this exchange.
And with that, we just want to say once again, thank you. Gracias. That's what I'll say. Your support matters. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Does anybody, any directors have anything they would like to say?
Are you guys in your first week here? Is it the second full week? Second week? At least the weather's gotten a little bit warmer since last week for you.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for coming. It's obvious, there's not a dry eye in the room. Your speech was so moving. And no doubt, we're a better district for you being here with us. So thanks so much for coming. Thank you for the gifts and we just hope you have a great rest of your time and safe travels home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our safety team has to follow this.
Yeah, do you want to sit back and go?
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
So before, so before John speaks, I just wanted to give some context to why... I'll wait a little bit longer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we pay for them to travel?
Before John gives his presentation, I just want to give some context to why I've asked him to come and talk about safety in our district. And so this year, you know, we've had a few incidents with regards to safety in our schools that have caused us to put our schools, to ensure that we're working with one another and that we're working with the Ankeny Police Department, but also it's caused us to implement some safety responses that may have caught our parents, teachers, and staff off guard this year. A few weeks ago, we had a community conversation to have a discussion about gun safety, about mental health, and about drug use in our city and in our schools. But John is here to share not only what we have been doing to keep our students safe this year and in previous years, and some changes from last year to this year, but some recommendations that in light of some of the questions that we've received by email from parents, from students, and from some board members around, you know, what else is it that we can do as a district to keep our kids safe? The one thing that I communicated in my responses in emails to our parents and students that sent emails was that we are doing a lot. However, this is a community school district and requires a community effort. And so I have no doubt that the central office team, along with our school teams, are doing everything they can to ensure that our students are safe, but we also need the support of our parents and our community members. I just have a few facts that I'm going to share before I hand it over to John. Since 1970, there have been 2,032 school shootings. Since the tragedy of Sandy Hook, there have been 948 school shootings. In four out of five school shootings, at least one person had knowledge of the attacker's plan but failed to report it. And then in nearly half of our parents with weapons in homes wrongly believe that their children don't have access, that don't know where their parents' gun is stored. And so yes, it's, we take our job very seriously with ensuring that our students and our staff are safe, but we also need the support of our community around what you're doing at home with regards to talking with your children and when our students are seeing something, that they say something and tell an administrator at school. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to John.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. You all have seen me get up here enough times and talk. You know that there's two very dangerous things that are about to happen. One, I'm a talker. And two, I'm very, very passionate about safety and security. So I'm going to do my best to stick to my notes today and wait for the hook from Dr. Pruitt if I go too long. So obviously, every day, the safety and security team at the Ankeny School District, all the administrators, and everybody strive for that safe, welcoming, secure environment to all of our schools, not only for our staff, but for our students, for our visitors, our contractors, and everybody in that building. So what I wanted to talk about today was just a couple little pieces of that, what we're doing currently, what we, you know, have been doing, what we're implementing now, and some potential things that we could look at into the future. So I want to start with just the basic, you know, our emergency planning. We update our emergency plan every year. You all adopt that in August of every year, but that isn't just a one and done thing that comes before you in August. We are continuously working with police, fire, emergency medical services, emergency management, and others to make sure that that plan is up to date as possible and reflects the best practices that we have learned through exercises, through real-world events in other parts of the country, through our own drills that we have on a regular recurring basis in our buildings. And we're always looking for opportunities to improve that plan. That is unchanged and continues moving forward. Something that we did recently complete at the end of last year is the state of Iowa provided funding through the governor's office for security assessments in our building. So I went around with the consultant, the contractor that was hired by the state, and we spent at least a day in every last one of the buildings and looked comprehensively at everything that had to do with safety and security in our buildings, literally from PA systems to cameras to locks, what kind of locks, what kind of doors, what kind of windows. We walked around inside the building. We looked around outside. We talked about fences. We talked about gates. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. Those are very comprehensive, very in-depth surveys, and we hope to be getting those back here really anytime. They told us about six to eight weeks towards the end of the year or so. We're probably coming up on that pretty quickly and I'm looking forward to seeing what an outsider sees and if there are opportunities for improvement there, things that we can change, trying to prioritize that not only across the district, but for individual buildings, how we can improve our safety and security. Sometimes we think we're really good and it takes somebody from the outside to look and point out our blind spots, if you will. Obviously, we do recurring training on that emergency plan. We have ALICE training that stands for, ALICE stands for alert, lockdown, isolate... I'm going to get that wrong. I don't know why I just did that. Alert. That is our active shooter protocol, right? So alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate is what that stands for. All those are potential strategies that can be used if we have a hostile intruder in our building. I will not say that that is exactly what we should do because every scenario is different. That's why there are different choices and different components of ALICE to implement based on the scenario that's going on. So we provide that training annually for staff and in some version, in some form, age-appropriate to our students. We recently have started providing some scenario-based training to our building leaders. I just had some time with them last Thursday to walk them through, hey, we have this gigantic book that's our emergency plan. Let's take one little section out of it and spend some time. What does that mean when we have XYZ emergency? What's the first step you need to take? What are some things you need to consider? Coming up pretty soon, we're going to also be doing that with what we call our District Emergency Operations Center staff, most of our folks from 306 Southwest School, you know, the admin building. How do we support the buildings when they have an emergency? They can focus on the emergency in that building. The district EOC, Emergency Operations Center, is really the support for that. So if we needed to do parent-student reunification, if we needed to provide transportation, if we needed to make decisions about canceling activities before and after school program, excuse me, those sorts of things, that would come from that District Emergency Operations Center staff in support of that building. And then what are we doing in the future? So I'm already looking at developing some additional training materials, maybe some videos that are specific to our district that could supplement the training that we get from the ALICE Institute in our annual trainings. I kind of like the idea that we can make that our own, right? We can show our own buildings, our own staff, and make things a lot more relevant than a canned video that staff may be taking and maybe don't see the relevance of it. So that's the training component. Then the next thing we need to do is we need to find out, is that plan good and is that training good? And how do we do that through exercises and drills, right? So we continue to meet state requirements for fire evacuation drills, for tornado drills, for lockdown drills, and those sorts of things. Some buildings have even taken it upon themselves to go above and beyond the state required. They're having more frequent drills and on topics that are not required, such as clear the hall or shelter in place, shelter in place, the bad thing's outside. We want to keep it out there. You know, it could be a criminal activity that happens down the street we've become aware of, you know, the bank down the street gets robbed. We want to make sure that that hostile actor doesn't get into our building, so we secure the outside envelope, increase our already security on that exterior envelope to keep that threat from coming inside. So there's a lot of additional things that are happening there. New this year is now that I have an assistant, Jason, who's manning the front door tonight, we're able to have a little bit more depth of the bench to go and observe these exercises and provide input, go to these drills, and look for opportunities. We went to two lockdown drills today, found really minor things of like, hey, here's a suggestion for improvement. The principals in the building were outstanding, like, hey, that's great. We hadn't thought of those things. So that's why we do those drills. Continuous improvement there. Equipment, we have access... Equipment, we have access control, as you all know. Most of you used a key fob to get in here tonight, right? So we have secured exterior entrances. We have compartmentalization that happens inside the building to limit an intruder, their movements throughout the building. We have video surveillance to monitor who's coming into our buildings and out of our buildings, in our parking lots, exterior of the building. We have a visitor management system where when you come into the building as a visitor, there's a process that you have to show an ID, you go through a background check, and those sorts of things. So those are all things that are in place right now. And then we continuously evaluate other potential violence mitigation strategies. So that could be any number of things. That could be, and the reason I say could be is I'm not recommending, I'm not saying you have to tonight, right? I'm just throwing out options that are out there. Could be policy changes, such as you've seen other school districts go to the clear backpack policy, right? That could be a potential for us. There could be other evolving technologies, such as weapons detection, magnetometers, or what you would commonly refer to as metal detectors. We want to make sure that when we evaluate all of those things, that we are looking at proven technologies and not making decisions based off just pure emotions. It's pretty easy to say, okay, let's put in a metal detector, and we could spend a whole day talking about metal detectors, so I'll try not to dive too deep into that. But what are the cultural impacts of that? We have open campus, so what does that mean? Students coming and going for programming, coming and going for lunch. That magnetometer has to be in operation for the entire duration of our school period, right? Who's going to staff it? How many people need to staff that? What does that look like and the potential costs? One group that I just talked to in Little Rock implemented magnetometers and spent $1,500 on these walkthrough metal detectors. Sounds pretty cheap, right? Staffing is costing them $250,000 a year for four people to man that throughout the time that the building is open, okay? So it's everything that we evaluate, we're looking at and balancing the impacts, both in resources and in money, and the real impacts of improving our safety and security in the building. I talked to somebody else recently, a vendor, about some amazing technology that doesn't use a metal detector, actually is looking for heat signatures. So if you picked up a cold weapon, you put it in your pocket, you walked into the building, it would pick up that heat difference between your body temperature and that illegal weapon coming into the building. I was amazed by that. I'm like, this is the coolest thing ever. This is fascinating. Tell me more. And then we got to the punchline at the end, which was, yeah, it's $60,000 per camera, and you'd have to put one camera at every entrance to your school to make sure that somebody, you know, isn't just bypassing the main entrance and going in another door. So it's always, we're looking at those effectiveness, and then what is the resources to implement? Cost, personnel, recurring costs, training, all of those sorts of things. We continue some partnerships with the Ankeny Police Department for school resource officers. Last year, we spent about $163,000 to have those two school resource officers available to us at Ankeny High School and Centennial. We are working with the police department, having a discussion about how do we expand that program, what opportunities are out there for middle schools to add additional school resource officers. Obviously, even there, there's financial implications, there's staffing implications not only for us but for the police department, hiring enough officers to have out on the street responding to normal crimes, but also then providing us a security presence through that school resource officer. We continue to have contracted security with Securitas in our 8-9 buildings, and obviously, Jason and I as our district safety and security team. So all of those things that I just described to you really focus on response, okay? And there's a concept in the security world and in the military called left-of-bang. How many of you have ever heard of that? Probably not. Dr. Pruitt has, okay? So think of a critical incident as responding as a timeline, okay? And I'll try and do this backwards so it works out right for you. So we have the incident, the bad thing happens, that's the bang in this theory. That could be somebody showing up with a weapon, that could be a shooting, that could be a hostile intruder in our building. All of everything that I just talked to you about tends to be focused on this end of the timeline, right? And what we need, sorry, I'll do it for you guys, right? It's got to be this side. Left, right, okay. What we need to focus on is left of the bang, earlier in that timeline, to identify, detect, deter, disrupt those plans. If we focus solely on when that hostile person or when that weapon gets to our building, we are already behind the clock, we are already behind the eight ball, right? So there are things that we need to do to identify those threats, to mitigate those threats, and to stop those threats from coming to our building in the first place. Dr. Pruitt, absolutely, 100%, you mentioned the see something, say something. That goes beyond just a sign hanging in our buildings. We have to educate, what does that look like? When we say see something, what is the something that we want you to see? And then how do we report that? So I was going to throw out the statistic, but Dr. Pruitt beat me to it. You know, a large number of these people involved in hostile violent acts are doing what the Secret Service refers to as leakage. They're telling people their plans, they're saying weird things, they're posting weird things on the internet, they're showing items to other people. Vast majority of those, three, was it three-quarter, right? Are absolutely expressing their intent to do harm or to bring a dangerous weapon. We need to create that culture where people feel safe and comfortable to report that, and how you report it. Our TIPS anonymous reporting tool is a great example of that. There's an 800 number hotline, there's an anonymous tool online where people can go and report those concerns, and then we can investigate that. That leads us to our next step in that process, which is our threat assessment team and our threat assessment process. The goal of there is trying to identify and quantify what is the threat, is there really a threat, and then provide support for that person. So that may be a troubled student that's talking about suicide. That could be somebody that has an unusual focus on other school shootings and other school violence and those sorts of things. The threat assessment process is not to say, let's keep this student out of our building. Often, that does not make you safer, right? But it is page after page after page of suggested interventions and support for that student. So that's another piece of that. Obviously, mental health support, the Secret Service, I always find this interesting, so the U.S. Secret Service has been tasked with researching school violence and active shooter scenarios. And so they immediately come out with their first report, and they say there is no profile of someone who does this, and then they spend 80 pages telling you the profile of someone who does this, right? So one of the things is leakage. The other thing is half of the folks that were involved in violent hostile acts, such as active shooter and those sorts of things, have some history of mental health issues. They're on medications, they're seeking counseling, they have undiagnosed mental health issues and those sorts of things. So making sure that we have good mental health support. Social skills building, right? Building a culture in our buildings of holding each other accountable to say, this behavior is not okay. And that literally is everything from the Mentoring Violence Prevention Program, the Leader in Me, even when you go into the high schools and you see the Hawk Way and the Jaguar Creed up on the wall, right? We're building that, leaders and developing the culture that we want to see in our buildings that hopefully, you know, your peers are telling you, this is not acceptable behavior, and that there's some level of disruption that occurs there. Daily conversations to counter and prevent a culture of violence. So again, the Secret Service says there's no profile, but then turns around and tells you that 46% of the people who carried out an active shooter event or brought a weapon into a building with hostile intent have had a previous history of assaults and hurting other people, right? So we need to be able to find those and have daily conversations to counter and prevent that culture of violence. Things about conflict resolution, how to disagree in a respectful manner and basically treating each other with respect and dignity. We see that, I think, more and more in our culture right now. We can't have just, we disagree and we go our separate ways, right? You either agree with me or you're crazy and you're, you know, right? So how do we do that respectfully? How do we have conflict? Conflict is always going to be there, but how do you have it respectfully, peacefully, and resolve it? And then the last thing that I wanted to point out, again, to Dr. Pruitt's opening comments there, is the community conversation support and involvement. If the parents aren't involved, if we're not having, if they're not having a conversation with their students about acceptable behavior, unacceptable behavior, appropriate use and inappropriate use of firearms, all of those sorts of things, we are, again, behind the clock. We need their support, again, long before it ever comes into our building, and we have to implement all of these other things that I started with, our plans, our trainings, our procedures, our exercises, our staff, all of those sorts of things. We need to get to that left-of-bang. We have more of an opportunity in that to detect, to deter, and honestly, we have more of an opportunity to get it wrong because we have time to recover. If we get it wrong during the response, when a bad person shows up with a hostile intent, we have no margin of error there. We cannot be wrong.
Any questions from the directors?
Well, it's obvious you're very passionate about this, and we appreciate it. It's obviously a sobering topic to think about, but I mean, what are those strategies that you have in mind that are left-of-bang that maybe we're not doing now that, or are we doing those things that you would think of?
I don't know that it's necessarily that we're not doing. I think it's things that we could maybe be doing better, we could be doing more often. We can always be looking for ways to improve, I think, in those things. You know, when I talk about mental health, social skills building, the MVP program, and all of those other things, I think we're doing good work. We need to continue that work, and we always need to be striving for what else can we be doing in those arenas that are left-of-bang, instead of just focusing on more, spending more money on things. I think all of those are tools in the toolbox, right? And so if you want to build a house, this was the analogy I used earlier today, you want to build a house and all you have in your toolbox is a screwdriver, you're not going to be very successful, right? You also need a saw, you also need a wrench, you also need a hammer, you need all of these other things. So we can't solely focus on one of these areas to the neglect of the other areas. We're never going to be able to build that house. We're never going to be successful in our response unless we use all of the tools in the toolbox and make sure that we have good quality tools and a wide array of those tools in the box for us to use.
I think one side of what John talked about is the emotional side of how our staff works with students throughout the entire school year, and so the counseling supports that are needed, the social work supports that are needed are just vital to us supporting students that are in distress or potential distress to prevent any type of incident in our schools or at home. He also mentioned MVP. MVP isn't a solution, it's a strategy that we're giving our students to advocate for themselves and to advocate for their peers. We spent last year and part of this year, you know, talking about the district audit that pointed out some of the culture and climate data that we've experienced in our district. We've heard from our students and staff about microaggressions, and so I think that part of the professional learning that John talks about with regards to keeping our students safe is really important, but then also professional learning on, for our staff around responding to when they're seeing bullying or hearing these microaggressions in the classrooms or in the hallway, around how we as administrators might support them to say something to students, and how to support those students, but also support our teachers is really important as we move forward because I think that history has shown if we ignore the bullies or if we ignore the ones that are being bullied, it can turn really bad for our schools and our district. So I think professional learning, social supports, counseling supports is an area of great need in education, but in our district also.
Absolutely. I have a question about, like, securely. So every week I get a report of keywords that my kids have searched. Do we have any flags on that? If there were suspicious words that we might trigger to be like, hey, let's check this out?
So we do, but that is sometimes a fine line of what those keywords are, so, and here's why. Darren and I used to joke about that. We'd get the alerts, I shouldn't say joke, but we would. We'd get an alert, boy, I bombed that test today, right? All the bells and whistles and lights would go off, and oh my gosh, there's a warning, somebody said bomb, right? Or, hey, you want to go shoot hoops after school? Oh, shoot, you know, the lights would go off, the flags and the flares and everything, and we'd have to look into that. I think that's one piece that complicates that. I think the other piece that complicates that is sometimes educational assignments may be, hey, I want you to research the Columbine shooting and tell me what happened in there. Those are legitimate searches, so trying to sort through what's a legitimate search that has an educational component and value to it versus someone's looking to do harm. So we need to look at that with some attention to detail. Obviously, again, I think that's parents, I think that's great that they're looking at it, why is my kid looking this material up? You know, we've definitely had situations in the past where we've had to bring somebody in and have a conversation with them about that, and student has one set of story, and the parent's like, really? We're not buying that, you know? So so far, most of those that we've found have a legitimate educational component or just a passing interest in. Thus far, we haven't stumbled across, you know, obviously, you would have heard about it, it would have been before you, the big suspicious searches or threats or those sorts of things on the internet, but it is another tool in the toolbox.
I think that this is where the partnership with our parents comes in really handy, and so we currently just don't have the manpower to monitor social media at all. And so we really rely on our parents and our students, well, focus on the parents. We really rely on our parents to, one, know what social media accounts their children have, monitor it periodically, if, because a lot of bullying takes place on social media, and our children may not always tell us that it's occurring. And so we have to be diligent around how we monitor our children's social media account in addition to text messaging. As a parent, like all of us except our student rep, how we go about checking text messages that our children are receiving, ensuring that they're not sending or receiving inappropriate pictures or images is just really important, important, and reporting that to the building principal is just vital because if we wait, it decreases our opportunity to identify who's sending those messages or pictures that they shouldn't be.
Well, out in the community, you know, speaking with our Ankeny Police Department, I'm encouraged, you know, they speak very highly of the relationship they have with you and our district and the things that we're doing, you know, just to make sure that if something does happen, they know where to go, what to do, and so thank you for doing that. And if nobody else has any questions, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
All right, contracts and agreements. May I have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements with the removal of the Kona ICE Section 9A I I Y and Tools Forever Section 9A I B contracts as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on these contracts and agreements? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, new business. So quiet in here without the students. Okay. May I have a motion? Well, do you want to say anything about this? I'm about to say it.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated in the survey around naming elementary number 12, and also the naming committee that met probably three months ago that got the ball running, rolling around identifying a potential name. If there are any questions with regards to, I think the communications team did a really good job of explaining context around all four names that were put forth before our community for the recommended name of Abbey Grove for elementary number 12. around all four names that were put forth before our community for the recommended name of Abbey Grove for elementary number 12.
All right, before we have any questions, can I get a motion to approve and accept the naming committee's recommendation of Abbey Grove for elementary number 12?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to item B, may I have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing, Northwest Elementary HVAC retrofit rebid for February 21st, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. at Prairie Ridge Middle School, 1010 Northwest Prairie Ridge Drive as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board member reports. Sorry, I just feel like there should have been like some confetti or something for that, all that work for that name. Sarah, do you want to start?
Sure, I'll kick us off.
All right.
A couple of updates for me. First of all, all of our COPAN students love, but what a delight to have them. So, I'm glad that we offer that program. It's thrilled to see the impact that it's having on people's lives. So, really just appreciate it, all of them visiting with us. Where I've been, I, we had policy committee last week. I also had my first Ankeny School Foundation meeting. I also attended the Community Connect. That was really great. I just wish there was more people there. It's just one of those great things that we offer. So, the more that we can get that out, the word out in the community and get parents there. There were lots of examples of things that I wouldn't even think to look in that drugs or money can be hidden in. So, it's just really eye-opening experience there. So, that's all I've got for this week. So, have a great month, everyone.
I was at policy as well. Just always enjoy those conversations. Coming up tomorrow night, I'm gonna participate in the Community Use of Schools meeting. I think that's a two meetings over the course of the next couple of weeks. So, look forward to participating in that and hearing what folks in the community have to say about our school uses. That is something we've had a lot of feedback over the years that we've been on the board about how we can, just getting feedback on that, I guess, is what I should say, which is the point of these meetings. I am gonna have to miss C I A C next Monday. I have a Ballard Board meeting that I'll be presenting at. I too participated in the community conversations around mental health and gun violence and echo Sarah. There were a lot of great resources there, the presentation, I just made it to one presentation, was really informative. And I just wish, you know, we could get, a lot of energy went into putting that together. I wish we could get more folks out in the community there. So, I hope we can continue to build that up. And just congratulations to both of our high school wrestling teams who placed the state dual tournament on Saturday and will be participating in districts this coming Saturday. That's all I've got.
I, my committee start up next week at C I A C, so I haven't attended anything, but I will give a plug for school enrollment. So, those of you that are out there that have not enrolled your kids yet, go ahead and get on. The website and do so is a pretty easy process. So, yeah, the COPAN students, it's really cool to see that. I know Amy and I got a chat with them last year and just hearing, you know, what they liked about Ankeny and different things that you would never even think of was really cool. So, I'm glad they're able to experience that with our students and our staff and our teachers. So, awesome that they're welcome into our buildings.
Well, right now, our service club at Ankeny Centennial is having a Can Drive. So, if you have a student, donate. Also, we have an MVP retreat on Thursday to get further education on how to help educate and start conversations. Really exciting.
Pretty quiet for me, other than attending Community Connect. That is a pretty powerful event, and I wish we, I agree. I mean, it's something all parents need to be a part of. Our district does a lot for the kids when they enter our door, and our kids are only as good as they leave home in. And that and I made it pretty apparent for me that needs to be out there, so. And tons of stuff coming up this week, so I'll try my best to make it all, so.
I also attended the community conversation and just wanted to thank all the vendors and the groups that came out that has tables there and spent their time communicating with people of Ankeny, the services that they provide, and to all the staff that put that together. It was a great evening. I want to thank the COPAN students and all the staff that make that program possible as well. It just shows the importance of diversity and how much our students can gain from diverse experiences and learning from other students. Just opens their world. So, I just think it's really important to keep that going. I'd like to thank our two state representatives who voted in support of public education last week. Things are running together. And that's all I have.
All right, yeah, thanks for all the work that goes into, my goodness, arranging all of those students to get here and to stay here for COPAN. I think it's, I agree with Amy that just the experience that they have coming here and the experience that our students have of meeting them and, you know, it's just, you can't trade it for the world. I took my son, who's 11 right now. He was 10, maybe he was 11 at the time. He was just 11, but we went to Tijuana, Mexico on a missions trip, and it was just the experience. You know, you could just see it, see them change as they experience different cultures. So, it's just really cool. So, I had the opportunity to participate in BizTown interviews at Ashland Ridge last week, and that was a really fun experience. One of my son's friends in class knew he was going to be interviewed by me, but he was literally shaking in the chair. He was so nervous. There was nothing I could do to help comfort him. But in any case, so that was a lot of fun. We have BizTown for them is coming up, I think, next week. We're going to that as well. And I also had an opportunity to speak at the Ankeny Rotary about the district and just kind of what's going on and what's happening. Darren, I did put a plug in for the Master Facilities Plan and let people know, like, stuff's coming or at least we're talking about it. And so, anyway, they were, it was a great, it was about, I don't know, 40 or 50 people that got to hear about Ankeny and all the great work we're doing here. So, that was exciting to be able to brag on you all and what you do. And other than that, that's all I have to say.
So, my experience at Ashland Ridge was completely different. I had a student said that, I've researched you, Dr. Pruitt, I'm ready. So, that was really interesting. I've Googled you, so that, I was like, what did you find out? And she told me a little bit about myself. But really enjoy being in schools with students. I also had the opportunity to be with some fifth graders on Friday. I'm a club leader at Southeast Elementary, and so, I'm co-leading the creative writing club, which has been really fun. And the directors had an opportunity to participate this weekend because they're creating a newsletter, and they asked if I could solicit some jokes from board members. And so, I got a lot of dad jokes, which are pretty funny, though they were dad jokes. And so, but if you didn't send them, you can still email me, and I'll get them to the club members this week. Looking forward to meeting with our MVP mentor students this Thursday. Very exciting. And then, last announcement, I want to thank the 3,000 existing families that registered over the weekend. Registration opened up on Friday, and we broke our record from last year. So, it took us a lot longer to get to 3,000 families registering their children than three days. And so, again, if you need information, please reach out to your child's principal. But it's also on our website for existing families to register your students. That's vital information for our district that helps us to begin planning for the next school year. Thank you.
All right, we do have a closed session here. So, may I have a motion to hold a closed session is authorized by Section 21.51a of the Open Meetings Law to review or discuss records which are required or authorized to be kept confidential?
Motion.
Second.
We'll be doing a roll call vote. You're fine.
Director Barthol.
Yes.
Director Klaus.
Yes.
Director Burke.
Yes.
Director Pollak.
Yes.
Director Tally Rani.
Yes.
Director Weldon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.